Kind of trying to get these two together now. The June 20th City of Andalia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Counsel, you've had an opportunity to review the council study session minutes of May 2nd, the council meeting minutes of May 2nd, and the council retreat minutes of May 9th, the council study session minutes of May 16th, the council meeting minutes of May 16th. Are there any comments or corrections? Being none, they stand approved. That brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards. And the first item is a proclamation. I'm going to be presenting a proclamation for Bee City USA to Mr. Al Tuttle, so if he could join me at the podium. Anyone else that would like to join us, more than welcome. Thanks very much for being here. We do have a nice proclamation here for you, and what I would like to do is just go ahead and read that to you, or the whole group. Whereas pollinators, to include thousands of species of bees, are essential for partners in producing much of our food and supply. And whereas, pollinators provide a significant environmental benefits necessary for maintaining healthy, biodiverse urban and suburban ecosystems. And whereas, pollination plays a vital role in the health of the trees and plants of our community, enhancing the quality of life, creating recreational and economic development opportunities. And whereas, for decades, the City of Andalia has managed urban landscapes and public lands that include many municipal parks and greenways, as well as wildlife habitats. And whereas, the City of Andalia provides recommendation to developers, residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardships, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats in the urban and suburban environments. Now therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Andalia, do hereby proclaim the week of June 20th Pollinator Week, in the City of Andalia, and in accordance with our Bee City USA affiliation, call upon our citizens to support the mission of this worthwhile organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, can we have a moment of silence for Joe Grandcheck, because he's the one that really spearheaded our activity to become Bee City USA. Amen. As people involved in politics, you're aware of people saying, well, I'm only one vote, and I can't make a difference. But together as a group, we can make a big change. And that's why we give each one of you a packet of seeds. It's one small packet, but if each one plants these pollinator seeds, that will help our pollinators have food, which is a major concern today in our current environment. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Tuttle. We appreciate everything you do.
Have the other members stand?
Yes, if they will. Please stand. We recognize. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation for the Division of Fire Civilian's Medal of Honor. Civilian Medal of Honor, I'm sorry. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll defer to Chief Follak, who is going to recognize Ms. Katie Williams today.
Good evening, and I appreciate your time. It's with great pleasure and honor that we appear before you this evening to bring to your attention some heroic actions that occurred on April 5th, 2022. On April 5th, 2022, crews were dispatched to the 966 Continental Court, a model family dwelling. Following a significant water leak that was being remediated by the landlord and the private contractor, Mrs. Williams, her boyfriend, and two other residents were permitted to stay in the apartment building adjacent to the work that was being done to dry out, remodel, and remodel the apartments that were affected by the water leak. Mrs. Williams felt uneasy about staying in the apartment without a CO detector. Despite the fact that there was no gas appliances in the building and little risk of CO issues, she went ahead and went to a local Walmart and obtained one and placed that into her apartment. The evening of the 5th, while Mrs. Williams was walking through her apartment, she noticed that the display on the CO detector was indicating 108. There was no alarm going off as the detector was malfunctioning. However, it was displaying 108. Mrs. Williams became more concerned about the and called the fire station directly. Crews immediately were dispatched to that address. On their arrival, they found readings ranging from 185 parts per million to 220 parts per million at the front door of the occupancy. This is a very dangerously high CO reading for that building, for any building. A contractor was using gas-powered heaters in an attempt to help dry out the apartments quicker. Those heaters were being pumped directly into the building. The exhaust from those heaters were being pumped directly into the building through large tubes, ventilation tubes that were left in the building to move the air through the building. Those heaters were putting off carbon dioxide, colorless and odorless gas, and without the CO detector would have never been detected, and that would have ended up in a fatality, or four fatalities more likely. So on behalf of the Division of Fire, I'd like to ask Mrs. Williams to join us at the podium. It's Mrs. Williams' intuition and concern for her own safety and the lives of at least four residents of her apartment building that make this heroic act. Without Mrs. Williams' CO detector, there is no doubt that four residents of this building would have succumbed to CO while sleeping that evening. Mrs. Williams' actions were heroic in nature, and we would like to present her with the Division of Fire's Civilian Medal of Honor for her actions.
Thank you. Well, thanks again for your good judgment and that situation. We appreciate it, and I know the ones around you do too. Thank you.
Hey, real quick, Amber, do you mind getting a photo? Do you mind if we put you up on our Facebook banner and everything there with maybe the chief? And thanks.
All right. We have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to speak, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comments.
Hello. So my name is Greg Bergman, and I'm a business teacher at Andalia Butler. And I also teach at the Linnor College of Business at UC Finance and Accounting. So this area certainly is pretty near and dear to my heart.
Can you give us your address, too?
110 Clay Street. 110 Clay Street. So I coach swimming, and I sent all of you an email a while back, and my concerns with just inappropriate behavior and dress in the pool. Sometimes the dress is not always scantily clad, but it is often materials that are more of a cotton material that really do mess up the filters in the pool. But I'll honestly, most of the time, the dress is pretty risque. And often, I'm trying to coach middle schoolers, sometimes even younger, and they're seeing this, and I'm genuinely concerned. I did a little investigating myself with the front desk staff, and I know that a majority, it seems, do not live in Andalia. So my recommendation on the email that I have sent to you was, can we possibly have a tiered system, like even more of a tiered system, for daily admission? Maybe Andalia residents obviously remain the same. We don't want to change that because it's our quality of life here. But maybe a little step up, of course, for the Butler Township residents, but then a significant step increase for non-residents of Andalia or Butler Township. So my concern, again, is just the behavior and dress is so egregiously inappropriate that I had to use words, to be honest, in the email to you that never in my life that I think I would be putting in an email. So I know that many of my students and former athletes on the boy swim team have run Castle Hills for a few years now, and so obviously they lament to me there are similar issues, if not even more egregious issues there. So it seems as though the problems that we were having in the basketball courts at the rec center have sort of drifted their way into the pool. And I know that we did a lot of reorganizing of time, and I don't know if it was the fee structure as well for the basketball courts, but it certainly did help a lot. And I know that there's a major Parks and Recreation Study going on right now. I'm just asking for a solution in the meantime, because I'm just trying to help out our kids and our families, and they're literally seeing behaviors and dress and parts of the body that are just extremely inappropriate for minors to see. So part of the problem is also that there's no adult really in there. I mean, unless you count a college sophomore an adult. So technically, there might be, but these lifeguards aren't really getting paid to deal with that kind of an adult problem. And so they don't. And honestly, I have 15-year-old athletes who are lifeguarding, and to be honest, I don't want them to have to deal with that. I think it's literally a big person problem, and I think we can really resolve it by restructuring the fee for non-residents and trying to, you know, keep our parks and recreation very clean and orderly and rule-abiding. So. Any questions on my part?
I think we've all seen your email, and we appreciate the thoughtfulness that you put into it and bringing it to our attention, and I know the staff is looking into these concerns, and because obviously, we don't, we expect better behavior and a better representation of our pools and our rec center than...
Right. Well, and to be honest, at the rec center, at least, I've been there four additional times since I'd emailed a coach, and 100% of the times, I literally approached patrons and told them that they are wearing inappropriate material. They're very respectful to me, but I'm in my 40s, 6'2" and 200 pounds. They're not significantly respectful to 120-pound 15-year-olds. So that's kind of the big problem we're seeing here, too, is that this type of, the protocol that is to be displayed is being put on the shoulders of kids, and it's really not fair. And I care about the kids, or I wouldn't be here. And they're dealing with things they shouldn't have to deal with. Every day. So. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your...
All right. Thank you.
Time.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Okay, we're going to move on to our City Manager Report. We have some information items and some action items. Mr. Went? Whenever you're ready.
I blame the law director. The, thank you very much. There's a, Your Honor, there are a couple of items that I would like to share with you. We had our first employee appreciation event this year, the Ice Cream Social last Wednesday. It was very well-attended, and there was a lot of camaraderie. I'd point out that the Fire Division is having about 11 runs per day, and 30% of the time, those runs overlap. On our website, we have our Park and Recreation Master Plan online survey that's up that'll run through Star Spangled Celebration. In our parks, we have a prominent QR code that we've put at strategic locations in the system to encourage people. Something really good that came in about a week and a half ago, the city was informed that we'll be receiving $300,000 through the capital budget bill for the state of Ohio. Councilmember Forrest, of course, has played a very integral role with that, as well as with Representative Plummer, Senators Antoni and Huffman, in securing those funds. And so we're working through what that timeline will be to build out the amphitheater at Art Park. But certainly, it's a huge win to bring in $300,000 when we haven't gotten those sort of funds before. Directing you to the screen, city offices will be closed Monday, July 4th, and observance of Independence Day. The rec center will close Sunday, July 3rd at 6:00 p.m., and will be open 7:00 a.m. to noon on Independence Day. The Star Spangled Celebration between the City of Andalia and Butler Township will take place at 7:00 p.m. on July 3rd, and have listed our many sponsors there, which also includes Pickerel, Schaefer, and Ebling. So thanks, Jerry, in addition to all of our other sponsors who are up there. Fireworks will shoot off at 10:00 p.m. or be displayed, to use the firefighter terminology. Some are scheduled for council meetings. We established that. I'll ask that we have a meeting on July 5th at 5:15 p.m., primarily to discuss Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission items. After that, the next regular meeting, 7:00 p.m. on July 18th, with study sessions starting at 5:30 p.m. on that day as well. That concludes my information items and report, Your Honor.
All right. We have an action item. Do you want me to cover that, or do you want to take that one?
No, please.
Okay. We have the Boards and Commissions' reapportment and expirations, and I think council's been given a copy of all the people whose terms will be expiring at the end of June 30th, 2022, and they are interested in reapportment for two years. So if I can have a motion to make the appointment of all the various boards and commissions as presented on the list?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Forrest. Any comments from council?
Other than to thank all these people for serving and agreeing to serve again. Very admirable.
Absolutely. Call the roll.
And I'll just point out that the list will be included as part of the minutes. So when you actually see the minutes to this, it will have everybody's names on the list that you do have, and they're there now, up on the board.
I have that. I just didn't say it. Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst. Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 22-R-42. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
A resolution to enter into an agreement for stop-loss coverage with Nationwide TMSRE.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city's health insurance broker, McGowan Braybender Agency Incorporated, recently received and reviewed with staff quotes for stop-loss carriers for the July 1 renewal of the city's self-funded health insurance plan. These changes do not affect the health insurance plan or premiums that are experienced by employees. It's in the city's best interest to schedule a six-month renewal in order to align the stop-loss renewal cycle with the plan year. That'll also be the calendar year. This has been a longstanding issue that the city manager's office has considered addressing, and the January renewal will be less confusing for our employees because it will align out-of-pocket maximums and deductibles, and it tends to provide better rates according to our broker. Depending on claims experience, McGowan Braybender and the carriers' actuaries anticipate savings of up to $65,948 over the next six months. Therefore, I am recommending council approve the renewal be placed with the incumbent Swiss Re, which is formerly TMS Re, and with Underwriter Services Corporation as the third-party administrator.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Resolution 22-R-42 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis, and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Resolution 22-R-42 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-43.
A resolution awarding the bid for the Dogleg Road Water and Sanitary Sewer Extension requested by the Public Service Department to Outdoor Enterprises LLC at the lowest and best bid price of $3,899,947. Wait, eight? Let's try it one more time. $3,899,947.70 using the alternate bid.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Your Honor, bids were open for the Dogleg Road Water and Sanitary Sewer Extension Project on May 25th. Seven contractors submitted bids for the project. Those bids ranged from just over 3.8 million to just over 4.9 million. I'm recommending awarding the contract for the project to Outdoor Enterprises LLC at the lowest and best bidder, their bid of $3,899, $3,899,947.70. I blame Jerry. The engineer's estimate for this project was just over 4.8 million. Thank you.
Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-R-43 as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak, and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Resolution 22-R-43 as presented. Are there any comments from council?
As long as we don't have to read the number again.
You want to read that again, Mr. Went, so everybody's clear?
Is that going to make a difference in the vote?
Please call the roll, Jerry.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-44.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the engineering and design for Dogleg Road Water and Sanitary Sewer Extension Phase 2 with Choice 1 Engineering in the amount of $150,700.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm recommending entering into an agreement with Choice 1 Engineering for engineering and design of the Dogleg Road Water and Sanitary Sewer Phase 2 project at the submitted cost of $150,700. This project will extend water and sanitary sewer to service the properties from Dogleg Road to the western boundary of the city.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion. We approve Resolution 22-R-44.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley, and a second by Councilwoman Forrest to approve Resolution 22-R-44. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-45.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an addendum to the agreement with SwimSafe Pool Management for aquatic staffing services at Castle Hills Pool in the Andalia Recreation Center.
Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. SwimSafe Pool Management submitted a formal request to create an addendum to the 2022 Aquatic Staffing Services Agreement in order to offset higher lifeguard wages as a result of recruitment challenges and also escalating chemical prices. The average lifeguard will be set, or is set at, $12 per hour, and the city has imposed staffing minimums as a contractual obligation. Their request from SwimSafe includes a request for 8.5%, an increase of $21,931 at the Andalia Recreation Center, and 23%, an increase of $22,100 at Castle Hills Pool. This is similar to what has been imposed on other communities. Director Clark, Superintendent Cryle, and I met face-to-face with the owner of SwimSafe, his operations director, and regional manager to set clear performance expectations and to express dissatisfaction with the timing of the rate increase. Director Clark conducted a cost-benefit analysis, which I've previously shared with council, and together we determined that it would cost the city at least $114,000 more to take the operations back in-house, and that it would certainly result in service interruptions this summer. As a side note, I've been very clear that we are monitoring operations at SwimSafe and at the VRC, and there are, there is a lot of merit in some of the items that Mr. Bergman has brought before us. We take those very seriously, and we've been having very frequent touchpoints. And so while I would like to be able to get a "adult", those are words that I also used in discussing with SwimSafe, that's been a challenge at this time of the year to get in, and it's certainly something that if we do continue with SwimSafe, and I'm not saying that's what my recommendation is going to be, that we make sure that we work that out in future years ahead of time. This did become quite a surprise to us, and so throughout the summer, Andalia police officers are making frequent walk-throughs at Castle Hills Pool. SwimSafe staff have been instructed to eject patrons who fail to comply with pool rules. City staff and residents are communicating clear expectations, and the admissions staff are tracking where patrons reside. I believe that we're seeing a general improvement from last summer, although it's early. We've also conducted one of our park-to-park community meetings at Castle Hills Pool. And so after a thorough review of the Aquatic Staffing Service Contract Addendum that was submitted by SwimSafe Pool Management, based on the policy options that are available at this time, the background information, cost-benefit analysis, and overall analysis of the information provided, I'm recommending that council approve the requested addendum that was submitted by SwimSafe Pool Management.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the Resolution 22-R-45 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak, and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Resolution 22-R-45 as presented. Are there any comments? Did I mess up with that, Vice Mayor?
It's all right, Your Honor.
Please have that noted in the minutes.
We all did.
Okay. All right. Call the roll.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. It's Councilman Follak's voice that's throwing me off tonight. I mean, the first motion, I was, who was that?
I did quite a few of the seconds that only made sense.
I'll try to do better from here on out. We have no ordinances in our first reading, and we do have a couple of ordinances in the second reading, that being Ordinance 22-18. Mr. McDonald?
Sorry. An ordinance rezoning .996 acres of land located at 3324 Benchwood Road from gateway business to highway business and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
The applicant, RVP Engineering LLC, on behalf of EROP, has submitted an application requesting a rezoning of the property located at 3324 Benchwood Road from gateway business to highway business. The purpose of this request is to allow for the construction of an automatic express car wash. The planning commission voted 3 to 0 to recommend denial of the proposed amendment to the city's zoning map.
Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak on Ordinance 22-18, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. And if I can ask Mr. McDonald, are we taking comments from people viewing online this week?
This would be our last meeting, that we can do that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Rob Dixon, member of EROP LLC, residing at 4651 Dogwood Court in Decatur, Illinois. So we've been up here a time or two, so I'll keep it very short for the long-winded meetings that are going on today. And we came back to this because of some options of extending the stacking, as we talked about during the study session. And Ms. Holloway pointed out that C2 does fall into all of the zoning requirements without requiring any variances. She did properly point out, too, that the way the concept is currently laid out, it is encroaching on the right-of-way. And I have, before this meeting, confirmed with our engineer that we can't, it was just an oversight on his part, we can get that out of the right-of-way, and we can get the eight-foot of landscaping that's needed there. So that's not going to be an issue for us to address. So with that being said, I do believe that we can get, with staff's input, we can hit all the requirements that the city has on us with that. And with the understanding that, as presented, there's no other variances that would be needed, and still go through the concept or the spec... the concept or the specs, if you will, of the layout and the landscaping and all that, too. So, the only other comment that I'll make at this stage is that if we go into this with any other conditional approval, we are at, we did table this last time, I am up against kind of a hard contractual obligation, so if you guys have additional questions or comments about the zoning, Mr. Went pointed out last time, which I thought was, I should have said this, to be honest with you, took the words out of my mouth, is the, is the spot zoning really our situation, of changing this to the HB zoning, or is the single-family lot itself, you know, that? So, again, if you have any other concerns besides stacking, please bring me back to the podium to discuss that. And I apologize, Councilman Folic, for, I don't know where the forty-seven, I looked through my notes, I don't know where that would have come, if I may have misread a forty-one to see a forty-seven, so I apologize for that on the study session earlier, so with that, I'll just open up for any questions that you have of me.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Ms. Holloway, were you, were you, was your recommendation C3 as opposed to C2?
C2. So, staff's recommendation on the rezoning was denial, and the Planning Commission supported that recommendation. As far as a concept plan for a, a possible, you know, site plan, you know, that gets us to the forty-one stack, it gets, addresses that concern of additional stacking space, concept C2 would be the one that could go forward with no variances and still achieve the stacking space.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Is there anyone online that would like to make a comment on this ordinance? Does not appear so, so I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, but, Your Honor, I'll make the motion to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilwoman Ayers to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen in its second reading. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
No.
Councilmember Blakeslee? Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six one. Next, we have Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four, Mr. McDonald.
In ordinance rezoning one hundred and sixty-three acres of land generally located west of Peters Pike between West National Road and Stone Quarry Road from planned unit development to Office Industrial Park and Public Facilities and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, per prior conversations about overall business friendliness and streamlining development of city-owned land, I am recommending approval of a city-initiated proposal to rezone Stone Quarry Crossings. This is the land generally west of Peters Pike between West National Road and Stone Quarry Road. Under the proposal, it would be rezoned from a planned unit development, a PUD, to a combination of Office Industrial Park and Public Facilities. The proposed rezoning area consists of approximately one hundred and sixty-three total acres, of which thirty-two point eight is proposed to be rezoned to Public Facilities, and one hundred and thirty point two is proposed to be rezoned to Office Industrial Park. The Planning Commission voted three to zero to recommend approval of this request.
Thank you, and since this is also an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak regarding Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or raise your virtual hand if you are watching online. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four in its second reading.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilman Folic to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four in its second reading. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. That brings us to our emergency ordinances, where we have several of them, the first one being Emergency Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two, Mr. McDonald.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of one million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding taxable land acquisition notes, Series two thousand twenty-one, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, the land acquisition note issued for the acquisition of land for the Stone Quarry Crossing Development matures on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. The total amount due is one million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in principal plus interest. The twenty twenty-two budget included an interest payment of twenty-five thousand dollars. The maturity date on the new note, which is one million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, will be July twenty twenty-three. The debt is scheduled to be paid off in full in twenty thirty-six. I anticipate that rezoning of Stone Quarry Crossing Development will help with the sale of the city-owned property for reasonable and responsible development, and I would propose that the proceeds be used to settle this debt in the future.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open up a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak on Emergency Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comments, and if there's anyone listening online, please raise your virtual hand if you'd like to make a comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve
Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two as an emergency. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Emergency Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum aggregate principal amount of one million, four hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding various purpose notes, Series two thousand twenty-one, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, the Fire Engine two thousand sixteen bond anticipation note issued for this fire engine matures on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. This note was combined with the Fire Ladder Truck two thousand twenty-one bond anticipation note in order to save on the costs of issuance. The total remaining amount due on the note is one million, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, plus interest. The amount of the principal payment for the fire engine is forty-eight thousand and two hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents for the ladder, or the ladder truck. The twenty twenty-two budget includes a pay-down amount of forty-eight thousand on the outstanding principal, and a hundred for the engine, and a hundred and fifty thousand for the ladder truck, plus an interest payment of seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars. The debt for the fire engine is scheduled to be paid in full in twenty twenty-six and twenty thirty-one for the fire ladder truck.
Thank you. Again, since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open up a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment, and if anyone is listening online who would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. Being none, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three as an emergency. Are there any comments?
Just think it's always important to point out for this, this and the previous ordinance that we just passed is not new debt the city is incurring, but just the reissuance of existing debt and, and basically a housekeeping practice that has to happen every year.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Next, we have Emergency Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-five, Mr. McDonald.
Directing the Board of Elections of Montgomery County to place on the ballot at the election to be held on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the question of whether the city of Vandelia should effect a government natural gas aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section four nine-two-nine point two-six of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Emergent, this emergency ordinance is directing the Board of Elections of Montgomery County to place on the ballot at the election to be held on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the question of whether the city of Vandelia should effect a governmental natural gas aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section four nine-two-nine dot two-six of Ohio Revised Code and declare an emergency.
Thank you, and since this is a emergency ordinance, I'll open up a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-five, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. And again, if there's anyone listening online who would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I would move to table Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-five until our July fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to table Emergency Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-five till our July fifth meeting. Any comments?
I, in thinking about this, I'd really like to know what the other cities feel. In some respects, Councilman, Councilperson Woods's comments about, you know, government choosing everything for somebody is, I thought, a very salient point. However, if somebody's going to opt into something on an individual basis, they have to take an action to do that, and if somebody wants to opt out of this, they have to take an action to do that. But you would be, I think it might be great to have the voters actually decide whether it's something that we want to do or not, and the people that seem to be, want to make a decision are the people that go out and vote, and I think one follows the other. So, with all that said, I'm glad we tabled it to get it, we can stew on it a little bit, but moving forward, we let the people decide, great, and, and they still have the ability to get in or get out as they see fit to do it individually, or maybe we get a better deal and they want to stay in with the city. So, I don't, I don't see that any individual's going to be any coors off than they are today by putting this on the ballot, so it's kind of no harm, no foul.
I have a question for Jerry. Does the, so the language that's proposed in this, the ballot language, does it have to, does it have to say such aggregation to occur automatically except where any person elects to opt out? Or can, I mean, because that, to me, that makes it sound like when it goes to the ballot, they vote on the fact that they will have to opt out. They'll be enrolled, they'll be enrolled automatically and they'll have to opt out, or is that something that the council can then decide after the vote, after the voters pass this, whether we enroll in a program that is an opt-in option, opt-out? Is that?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. This is solely for an opt-out. I mean, again, I'm not one hundred percent sure, I glance over to Holly in case she knows, I don't know that the opt-in has to go to the ballot. That's what I'm not positive about. I know for a fact the opt-out has to go to the ballot. As for the actual language, I think it says it will be substantially in this form, because it's the Board of Elections and the Secretary of State who will ultimately approve the language. But I'm almost positive, based on, I've seen three or four different ones of these that went through, and each one had the opt-out provision specifically listed in them. So, I do know that you have to have that language in there.
So, in response to what you just said, so if we don't send anything to the ballot, can council still join an aggregation and offer that as long as it's an opt-in?
I would let you know before July fifth.
Okay. Because I think that's what some of us would be more supportive of.
Right, exactly.
Versus everyone is just automatically enrolled, and then they have to take the action, excuse me, the action to disenroll.
Right. Typically, the opt, if the opt-in versions don't have as favorable rates as they opt out because of the obvious, the people that are selling it to you at those rates want to have that large group of people that are, have to actually take an affirmative step to do that, so.
Okay.
And it will give staff time to hear some of the comments or follow up on some of the comments we've made tonight, as far as what other jurisdictions are doing, so that we understand a little bit how the program works, what trials and tribulations they've had, and if it's something they would do again, et cetera, et cetera, so. Thank you. Thank you for the work done so far on it.
All right. Call the roll.
And again, this is a motion to table, just sure everyone knows. Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Emergency Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-six, Mr. McDonald.
Directing the Board of Elections of Montgomery County to place on the ballot at the election to be held on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the question of whether or not the city of Vandelia should effect a governmental electricity aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section forty-nine twenty-eight point two-oh of the Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Emergency Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-six directs the Board of Elections of Montgomery County to place on the ballot at the election to be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two, the question of whether the city of Vandelia should effect a governmental electricity aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section four nine-two-eight dot two-zero of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open up a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comments, and if there's anyone online who would like to make a comment, please speak now. Being none, I will close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the same motion to table Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-six, twenty-six to the July fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to table Emergency Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-six to the July fifth meeting. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. That brings us to reports from boards and commissions, and we have a variance request for a fence at seventy-six fifteen Poe Avenue. Mr. Reynolds?
Oh, that's me?
Mr. Went.
Oh, it's me? Oh, I was looking at you. I thought you had to read the title, my bad.
Boards and Commissions.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm caught up now, here I am. The applicant, Christian Stone, has submitted an application requesting a variance to allow a six-foot-tall chain-link fence with an additional twelve-inch barbed-wire top in front of, in the front yard on the property located at seventy-six fifteen Poe Avenue. Per city code, fences in non-residential districts are required to be constructed behind the front, building line and barbed-wire is not permitted, except in certain industrial zoning districts. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted three to zero to recommend approval of this request with two conditions.
And those two conditions are on the screen up there.
I believe it has something to do with it being vinyl-coated and landscaping, as noted. Correct? All right. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve the variance request at seventy-sixteen, seventy-six fifteen Poe Avenue.
And just a reminder, there's two variances. One for the location of-
One for the location of fence. And the variance for the barbed wire. And I move that we approve both.
Second.
With the conditions noted.
With the conditions noted.
All right. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by, I believe that was Councilman Blakesley, that we approve the variance for the fence at 7615 Poe Avenue and the barbed wire with also the conditions noted. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have a conditional use at 3324 Benchwood Road. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. This conditional use is for 3324 Benchwood Road. I've enclosed a memorandum from Ms. Holloway wherein the applicant, RVP Engineering LLC, on behalf of EROP, has submitted an application requesting a conditional use permit to allow the use of vehicle washing establishment on the property located at 3324 Benchwood Road. At its meeting on April 12, 2022, the Planning Commission voted two to one to recommend denial of the request.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve the conditional use on 3324 Benchwood Road.
I, I was just going to ask if you wanted to specify, if there were any specifications to be made with the site.
I believe that staffer was C2. There were different site plans that were presented.
This is written quite funny. This says the rezoning, which is the approval of conditional use for that property.
Yeah, this, this is written off. Yeah.
So we're approving the conditional use with specifications that.
This would be, yeah, this is to.
Concept C2.
Yes.
C2.
Okay. So moved. Now, let's say, we'll back up. Approve the conditional use on 3324 Benchwood Road with the conditions of the concept C2.
Right. And that would be subject to the Miller, I mean, this is automatic, but the Miller-Benchrock overlay district and the landscaping requirements associated with all of that. So that would come with it.
Okay.
Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve the conditional use at 3324 Benchwood Road with the items as noted in the C2. Any comments?
I just, real quick, the comment, I mean, I'm, I'm going to vote against the conditional use because my primary concern is still the stacking quantity, knowing, having familiarity with a similar business and the traffic congestion that it creates onto a private parking lot. This, I don't, even with the C2 concept and 41 cars, I believe it's going to create a traffic issue on Benchwood Road that is going to be hard to overcome, so.
And I'm going to agree. I, I agreed with the rezoning because the, the nature of the spacing between those two or three properties, but there still hasn't taken care of the possibility and potential problem of the traffic on a thoroughfare. I mean, that is a busy road. Everyone I've seen has been on some kind of side street where you had some more access and less problems if they're parked out on the street. But the ones that are on main thoroughfares are stopping traffic. And, and this is, this is a really busy area, and I, I don't see that use there. So I agree.
Any other comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folic?
No.
Councilmember Fairst?
No.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
No.
Councilmember Blakesley?
No.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
No, and the motion fails five to two. Next, we have the service meeting minutes draft of May 19, 2022, the BZA minutes of April 13, 2022, and the Planning Commission minutes of April 26. Are there any comments? All right. That takes us to the May bill listing in the amount of $2,480,933.25, and the list of the May expenses over $50,000, and the May purchase card detail in the amount of $31,973.11. That brings us to council comments. Mr. McDonald?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Went?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Ayers?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Folic?
Just two things, real quick. First, I wanted to recognize and congratulate Ms. Elaine Johnson, who, for lack of a better term, her retirement from the city's planning commission, but she elected not to seek another term on planning commission. But Elaine has served the city for 18 years on planning commission, and she was very knowledgeable. I know when I got on planning commission, she was a, a good mentor for that group, but I think her leaving that group is going to be a hard shoes to replace. So congratulations to Elaine, and I believe she's moving to California, so, or somewhere, but I think it's California. And then also just best of luck to the three individuals that we had here at last council meeting, Brady Schneider, Ashley Arnett, and Jackson Clark. They perform, they, not perform, compete. They compete this coming weekend at the State of Ohio Special Olympics, so best of luck to them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fairst?
We brought up Elaine Johnson, and she is leaving for San Diego tomorrow morning. So she didn't get off that board because she didn't enjoy it, and she will not be in the area. But that does let, let you all know that we do have these boards and commissions. They're very important. The people who serve on them do a good job of supplying information to council, and so it's a very needed spot. We have a few openings, and if anybody's interested, please contact staff, and we'll get you more information on those positions. But that's all this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blakesley?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman Woods?
Nothing.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
No, thank you.
All right, and I have no further comments. It's recommended council enter into executive session to discuss the possible purchase of property in public purposes and the sale of other real property at competitive bidding or otherwise, and also to consider personnel matters pertaining to employment dismissal or discipline of a public employee, or, or and number three, to review the collective bargaining strategy related to the Teamsters. This will, we will re-adjourn to the regular meeting after the executive session, at which time we may have additional items to consider for a vote. Have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, it was moved by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Fairst. Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0.